Test 1, 2. Test 1, 2.
Testing, testing. Testing English, testing English, okay. English, English.
Red one. Let me just check this out here. Check, check. One.
And for Ottawa Public Health. In 2015, the board developed new strategic priorities to guide Ottawa Public Health, adopted an immunization strategy that aims to increase needles in arm. The board approved an innovative trial pro-
Do you need some of your work?
We did that first.
Sorry, only couple days.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If I could ask members of council to take their seats and we'll begin the meeting in one minute. On va commencer la réunion dans une minute. Good morning and welcome to the City Council meeting of the 27th of April. La Réunion du Conseil pour l'Event 7 Avril. For those who are able to, could you please rise for a moment of reflection and remain standing as we introduce our special guest who will sing the National Anthem? If you could remain standing, I'll ask our Deputy Mayor Bob Manette if he would be kind enough to introduce our special guest who will sing our National Anthem.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council colleagues, and viewers at home. I am honored this morning to introduce to you an exceptional talent from Orleans. Mr. Mayor, my colleague, the Conseil de Ville.
Dear colleagues and all those listening at home, it's an honor for me this morning to share with you an outstanding talent from Orleans.
singer-songwriter who has released two albums of original pop-rock music. Brandt, or chanteur, il est venu.
He's a composer and a singer and already has two albums in his name.
Cardinal Creek and is always available to help out the community whenever he's asked. In his interest, I'm Cardinal Creek.
He lives in Cardinal Creek. He's always available to assist the community when we need him.
And winning three different international songwriting awards, competitions, was a finalist twice and in the last three years. Il a gagné trois compétitions internationales. Attard, il est venu et fut finalement la deuxième fois occasion. With several singles gaining airplay on commercial pop, Christian radio in Canada, as well as selected countries across the world, he will be releasing a much anticipated new release in April 2017. His latest song, When I'm With You, received a 2015 Gold Pixie Award for Excellence in Music Video. It was also named a semifinalist in the 2015 UK Songwriting Competition. On top of this, When I'm With You has been selected as one of Ottawa's music newest songs and he will be performing today at the Marion Dorr Plaza where I invite all of you to take part of it. Brandt and his band are performing tomorrow night at the Atomic Rooster on Bank Street for a benefit concert. I tell you, I'm putting the plug for Brandt. He is always interested in working with the communities across the city and to support musical requests. From Orleans Ward One, I ask you to join me in welcoming your man, Brant Petwick.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sense command. Qu'à ton bras, c'est porter les pieds. Il se porte l'aqua. Ton histoire est une époque de plebriots exploit. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Brant. Merci beaucoup, Brant. This time, I'd like to invite the members of the Board of Bon Appetit Ottawa to the podium for this meeting's Mayor City Builder Award presentation. If you could all come forward. And I'd also invite councillor David Chernushenko from Capital Ward where most of Bon Appetit's Ottawa's activities have taken place to join us as well. Je voudrais aussi David Chernushenko.
I'd like to invite David Chernushenko, councillor for Capital Ward where most of Bon Appetit Ottawa's activity take place, to join us as well.
I'd like to recognize Phil Wasserman, a familiar face to many of us here at City Hall, the event chair, Fiona Gilofillin, sponsorship and sales, Karen Joint, volunteer coordination, Becky Judges, treasurer, Paul Legarier, logistics, Heather Lockwood, food and beverage, Jantine Van Cregan, media, Marcia McAlpin, event coordinator, and Dawn Masters, website and branding. Now in its 20th year, Bon Appetit Ottawa provides recipes for relief of poverty and hunger in the national capital region. Driven by leaders of the hospitality industry to support the operational needs of local charities, Bon Appetit Ottawa has a particular focus on disenfranchised youth and seniors. As leaders of the hospitality industry in Ottawa, the founders thought it appropriate to host a food-related event to give back to the community and The Great Taste of Giving was born. Through its 19 years of operation, Bon Appetit has raised over $2.1 million for local various charities. Au cours de ces disney années d'ex-
Through its 19 years of operation, Bon Appetit Ottawa has raised over $2.1 million for local various charities.
Over 36,000 patrons have attended their annual Great Taste of Giving to enjoy over 2 million food samples. And I have to say that I borrowed the Bon Appetit model when I helped start Taste of the Glee. I hope it wasn't an infringement on your good idea, but it is another local charity that's raised tens of thousands of dollars to help those less fortunate. Thanks to the over 1,600 food and beverage sponsors and numerous volunteers, Bon Appetit Ottawa will be celebrating its 20th anniversary next week when The Great Taste of Giving kicks off on May 3rd at the Aberdeen Pavilion at Lansdowne Park.
Thanks to the over 1,600 food and beverage sponsors and numerous volunteers, Bon Appetit Ottawa will be celebrating its 20th anniversary next week when The Great Taste of Giving kicks off on May 3rd.
16 beneficiaries include Bruce House, Carlington Community Health Centre, Christie Lake Kids, Harmony House, YMYWCA of the national capital region, and the Uville Centre. Thank you very much for your continued efforts in the community and congratulations on the 20th anniversary.
Thank you for your continued support in the community and congratulations on your 20th anniversary.
I present to your board of directors with the Mayor City Builder Award on behalf of my colleague, David Chernushenko, and I thank you very much for your job well done.
On behalf of Bon Appetit Ottawa, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Watson, and your City Council colleagues for the prestigious City Builder Award. During our 20 years of existence, Bon Appetit Ottawa has raised over 2 million, as you mentioned, focusing charities for hunger relief and especially organizations that help children or the elderly. Our annual food and wine event attracts a knowledgeable after-work crowd and allows them to meet and mingle with about 70 of the region's restaurateurs, caterers, breweries, and wineries. We're pleased to say our event takes place in an extraordinary city-owned asset, the beautiful Aberdeen Pavilion at Lansdowne Park, and the atmosphere of this historic building certainly contributes to our success. When we started this event 20 years ago, my restaurant colleagues Alfie Friedman and Vic Jones and I were looking for a way for the hospitality community to give back to the region after having done two fundraisers for specific causes. I'm proud of the work I and my colleagues on the board have done, and we look forward to working with our food and beverage partners, our charities, our volunteers, our key sponsors, including RBC Dominion Securities Wealth Management, for many more years to come. I hope we will see many of you at our event next Tuesday, May 3rd, 5:30 p.m. Tickets are still available at bonappetitoawa.ca. Thank you.
A roll call, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Concierge Manette. Councillor Midic, Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor Alshen Tiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadry.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Ici.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Eglie.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Concierge Fleury.
Ici.
Councillor Nusbaum.
Ici.
Councillor McKennie.
Present.
Councillor Leeper.
Here.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Chernushenko.
Present.
Concierge Cloutier.
Present.
Concierge Blay.
Present.
Councillor Darus.
Here.
Councillor Moffett.
Here.
Councillor Kakish.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
Ici.
Look, I'm at the ten, Mr. Lamar.
Merci. Confirmation in minutes. Adoption de process verbe pour le 13 avril 2016. Carried. Declaration of interests, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Declaration de conflits d'intérêt. Councillor Shirelli.
Your worship, I, councillor Shirelli, declare a potential deemed indirect pecuniary interest on item seven, City Council Agenda 30, Committee and Protective Services Committee Report 13, item six, Housing Services and Committee Funding, Grants, and Contributions, whatever, particularly on recommendation three, approve the realignment of two funding envelopes within the Housing and Homelessness Investment Plan and maintain the balance of the elements of the program as outlined in the report, as my daughter is employed in a part-time job with the Shepherds of Good Hope.
Okay, thank you. Communications as presented. Regrets. Councillor Midic has sent his regrets for this meeting. Motion introduced reports. Motion pour ta présentation de rapport. Councillor Brockington, please.
We have been abandoned by our union.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I was hoping our union would be here to ask it to reconsider, but now I-
Thank you. Councillor Brockington, please.
Thank you, your worship, and good morning. I'd like to introduce the most, introduce reports that the AutoBoard of Health Report seven-
So we'll come back to that. Residential Services Home Program Standards. Housing Services and Committee Funding, Grants and Contributions. Councillor Shirelli is excusing himself from the meeting. Environment Committee Report number 8. Urban Tree Conservation Bylaw. Mise à jour des règlements municipaux sur la conservation des arbres herbains. Carried. Planning Committee Report number 24. Zoning Bylaw Amendment 89, 91, and 97, Beechwood Avenue. Zoning Bylaw Amendment 6191, Reno Road. Carried. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? On the bulk consent agenda as presented? Carried. So we're back to the Board of Health. Councillor Nusbaum had a question on the annual report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just a question, I don't know if it's to Dr. Levy or to the Chair, not sure. I guess one on substance and one on process. On substance, I was interested to, I watched the video, which was very, very well done. Thank you for that. But there were a number of things that I wanted to ask that weren't available in the video. One was, one of the issues that had been raised last year as a real focus and priority for the Board of Health was the immunization issue, and I know you were making good progress on that. There wasn't any information on that in, in the actual video, and I'm just wondering, Dr. Levy, if Dr. Levy could update council on how things are going on that issue. It's something that we all heard a fair amount of, and I just would be curious how progress is proceeding on that.
Thank you very much, councillor Thrie, Mr. Mayor. The Board of Health will receive an update report on our progress on that file. The really short version of it is it's gone extremely well. We mobilized several resources to address some of the backlog that had built up over the years, over the last year, and have had several contact points with virtually every one of the 150,000 students in, in public schools. And I anticipate that when the report is finalized and presented to the board in June, we'll see what we anticipated to see, that, that immunization rates in this community are very high, and we've managed to do that without prolonged suspensions. The balance that we have to face when we're, when we're implementing the approach to mandatory school-based vaccination or reporting of vaccination is that, in fact, it's not in anyone's interests, the student, the family, the community, from a public health point of view, in actually keeping children out of school or youth out of school. And so, in fact, while we're enforcing the school-based suspensions, we're actually seeking to do everything we can to prevent the students from not needing to be, to be suspended. So the really short answer is it's gone extremely well. We're very satisfied with the process and the outcome, or the progress at least to date, and I anticipate that the outcomes will be, will be more than satisfactory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's helpful. On the process issue, having said that, I thought the video was useful, and I enjoyed watching it, I, I would be interested and was interested, as I watched it, in thinking a little bit about some of the trends that are happening in the public health area. And the video provided some interesting snapshots, but didn't really give us a sense of how things were working in terms of year over year, in terms of broader trends, didn't really necessarily get to sort of the challenges moving ahead or the priorities. And so I'm not sure if this is a question for Dr. Levy or for the clerk, but I was surprised that there wasn't an actual written report that might get into some of those details. I know this is a requirement under the City of Ottawa Act. And so I guess my question is, if, if someone on council or a member of the public wanted to have a written record in order to understand a little bit better what some of those more historic issues are, what some of those challenges moving ahead are, where would that person go? And would it be necessary to have a more comprehensive annual report to accompany the video?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take a first crack at that, and the MOH can add anything he deems is appropriate. The member's absolutely correct, there's actually no statutory requirement or mandate for the Board of Health to report on an annual basis to council. However, the City of Ottawa Act very clearly says the Board shall do the following things at the request of the city, and the city, many years ago, when it established the autonomous board, made this request. Number two says make an annual report to the city on the Board's operations. But, Mr. Mayor, that's as specific as the legislation gets, so I would suggest that if the council would like us to examine this in midterm governance, to see if there's more specific issues, whether they be financial or on trends or those sorts of things, on the operations of the Board, we'd be pleased to do that and bring that back later on this year. With regards to the supplementary question as to whether or not there is specific information that people can ask, there is a written commentary that was actually the transcript for the video, which is available, and we reproduced, but also they could obviously contact the MOH's office if there were anything specific they want, and he would, he would address it accordingly.
Thank you, Thrie, and thanks to, to Mr. O'Connor. The only thing I would add is that on our website, under reports, there are several reports, including probably the, the one that would be of most interest to you, pursuing that kind of, that kind of analysis, would be our 2014 Snapshot on Health, which is a detailed statistical report that, that has many, many trends within it. Sometimes the reports don't include particular areas of, of, of interest, and then we can run special reports if, if any are wanted, but we're more than happy to take individual questions and, and seek to respond to them.
Thank you very much. Just a follow-up to the clerk, just reading from paragraph 7-2 of the City of Ottawa Act, the Board shall do the following things at the request of the city, make an annual report to the city on the Board's operations. Is the clerk saying that the city hasn't requested the Board to make an annual report?
Oh, no, quite to the contrary, Mr. Mayor. The city council of the day was very clear, when this revision was made to the City of Ottawa, that they did want an annual report. What I was suggesting was, council hasn't specified any particular aspects that they would like to see, and I was suggesting that if council wanted to do that, midterm governance was probably the most appropriate venue.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Cadry, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and just a comment on the report that was put forward by the OPH this year in a video format. So far, I've received quite a few positive comments on the way the report was presented, and anybody who's had external questions or some additional questions, they've come back and asked through the Board of Health in terms of those questions. So as a Chair of the Board, I'm quite satisfied with the way the report was presented, but as the clerk suggests, that maybe at midterm governance review, we'll review our process going forward and come back to this council in the future.
Yeah, I would certainly commend the, the Chair and the medical officer of health. I remember when I was a minister at Queen's Park, we would get literally dozens of printed copies of annual reports, and quite frankly, they would end up in the recycling bin. This is an innovative way of reaching more people, a more modern way, so I commend you. I wouldn't want us to go and do both. It defeats the purpose if we're going to do one electronically and then have a printed copy, so let's be careful about not duplicating efforts, and I think my perspective is it's , you're to be commended. I thought the, the video was well done, and it's a new way to reach a larger audience than simply having a, a paper copy collect dust and, and cost us trees and money to print that very few people will read, so congratulations. On the report received, thank you. Our next item is Childcare Service Plan 2016-2017. Councillor Fleury, seconded by Councillor Deans, has a motion. Councillor Fleury, if you'd like to introduce the motion.
I will read the motion, Mr. Mayor. I think it identifies the components. Whereas the Bozalay Daycare Centre with 49 available childcare space located at 333 York Street, also known as the 380 Murray Building of Ottawa Community Housing, whereas Bozalay Daycare Centre closed at the end of August 2015 in order to complete construction, and whereas the Childcare Modernization Act came into effect August 31, 2015, whereas the City of Ottawa has adopted a mandate to serve vulnerable families in areas of the city where there are insufficient childcare spaces to meet demand, and no other childcare providers are able to shift their service offerings, and whereas the city's French language policy guarantees access to French language services, and whereas Lower Town has a large francophone population, and many local schools in the areas, in the area are francophone, and there's an interest among the not-for-profit childcare providers in re-establishing licensed francophone childcare services on York Street after construction is complete, therefore be it resolved that City Council direct the, the, I'm sorry, there were amendments made here, but I have it in English here because there were amendments.
Council direct the general manager for community and surface and social services and system service manager on behalf of the Province of Ontario to ensure that all required information and funding opportunities be provided to the non-for-profit childcare providers with potential interest in re-establishing licensed francophone childcare service in Lower Town, and further be it resolved that council requests that the landlord and a non-for-profit childcare provider make all efforts to resume childcare services at the earliest possible convenience upon completion of construction work at 333 York Street.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Agli, please, the motion.
Yeah, just a question, I'm not sure whether it's for councillor Fleury or for staff or a combination. Why are we limiting ourselves to partnering up with just a non-for-profit group? Mr. Burry, as you know, a similar thing happened in, in my ward at the Villa Marconi, and we were able to, to fill that hole, working with a for-profit group that's now running a successful daycare in that particular location. So I'm wondering why, I have nothing against the motion in general, but I'm wondering why we would limit ourselves to, to just working at the not-for-profit sector if there's a need that needs to be filled.
At this point, the motion would be consistent with the mandate, which is that city doesn't provide services and we look to work with the not-for-profit sector. In addition, most of the provincial funding that is available at this particular point in time is strictly or limited to the not-for-profit sector.
... opportunity to service a need in that part of the town, so.
I think at the end of the day, if there were no not-for-profits interested and there was a for-profit, that would be a different question, but at this point, since we've had interest expressed specifically from four not-for-profits, at this point, that we would be looking as our service manager role to work with them around the potential license for that location.
So I guess the follow-up question is, if, if this is reported in the media, which it likely will be, and you get a phone call, or councillor Fleury gets a phone call from a for-profit operation that wants to set up there and offer a francophone or a bilingual daycare, what's the city's reaction? Are we going to work with them, or are we going to say, you have to wait until we see if we've exhausted the not-for-profit options?
What we would do is we're going to refer those individuals to the landlord, who makes that property available, and in our role as service manager, we will work with the Province of Ontario around the licensing of that particular location. The service providers work directly with the province around a license, and now under the legislation, we have a role to review that license as well as ensure that that is a viable location in the longer term, which are new, new things that have come in under the Act as of January.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, councillor. Councillor Wilkinson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one question on the motion and another general one on the, so I should hold that one or do both together?
No, you can do both now, please.
The first one, we have a policy, I think, of proportion of English and French, is that's going to be maintained in this, to make sure we have enough, we did that to make sure we had enough francophone spaces, but it was sort of a balancing.
That's correct. This, this would not impact anything that we have with respect to those ratios.
Okay. The other thing, I see that you're having some problem with funding from the province because of the new way of doing things by having the money for going to the parents of the child where they go instead of going directly to the centers. Has that been worked out, or should we be changing how we provide the funding?
I think the primary issues around funding relate to the entire childcare sector. All agencies, as a result of early learning, are under a certain degree of financial stress at this particular point in time. The issue for the province is they're wanting to actually reduce the cost of childcare, and what we are, have been saying to them is that we believe in many cases, the amount of funding or grant that they're offering to agencies is insufficient to maintain that balance of fees, quality, and cost.
What's happening with it?
Essentially, what is happening with it is there's insufficient total provincial dollars for all of the agencies that are now not-for-profits out there based on the amount that the city is receiving as one block amount to distribute to agencies.
So we're taking action by going to the province and explaining the situation?
Absolutely. That's what's in our annual service plan, and we are the first municipality that has very detailed financials that we are submitting to the province so that they can actually see the impact of their policy decisions.
So that you'll get back to the mayor if we need to have some political pressure on this one?
We will do that as part of our annual service plan, yes.
Because I would like to, I think, we, I know we're short of funding, and we've talked about this a number of times, and the, I would hate to see children not being denied proper care because of this, so anything we can do to help doing that is, I'm certainly there, and I'm sure, I'm sure my colleagues are as well.
The only comment I would add is that in 2016, there is a substantive amount of work we're doing with agencies around their costs, their operations, the services that they're providing, so we have a very clear picture by the end of the year of exactly what's happening with virtually every agency operating in this city, as well as the some 33,000 now spaces that are providing service.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Wilkinson. Councillor Kakish, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just had a quick question, based on the discussions that we had at Community and Protective Services, my understanding was that, you know, the options have been exhausted with the province, and that door was closed, and what I'm reading in the motion here is that we're sort of reopening that, so correct me on that if I'm wrong, but then also, can you explain a bit about the historical context specifically with Bozalayla and, and some of the context in that perspective specifically? Because it seems like, from what I heard from you at Community and Protective Services, we've already explored those options and we came to a dead end, so are we just reopening that discussion again with the province? Or if you can elaborate on that for me, please.
I'm not sure quite understand the question and the relationship to what we discussed at committee with respect to this, I think, looking forward, once there's been a suspension at a, a location due to major construction, the province has indicated that this will require a new license, so that is one of the new elements for this particular location. So it will require a new license. In addition, it'll have to meet the present licensing requirements. What I meant, what I was discussing earlier is actually what the role of the city is now legislative with respect to childcare. We are now the, essentially, the system service manager, and we act on behalf of the Province of Ontario. Previously, we had no direct relationship with determining where services would be offered in the city. That was...
with virtually every agency operating in this city, as well as the some 33,000 now spaces that are providing service.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Counselor Wilkinson. Counselor Kakish, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just had a quick question. Based on the discussions that we had at Community and Protective Services, my understanding was that, you know, the options have been exhausted with the province, and that door was closed, and what I'm reading in the motion here is that we're sort of reopening that, so correct me on that if I'm wrong. But then also, can you explain a bit about the historical context specifically with Bozolayla and some of the context in that perspective specifically? Because it seems like, from what I heard from you at Community and Protective Services, we've already explored those options and we came to a dead end, so are we just reopening that discussion again with the province? Or if you can elaborate on that for me, please.
I'm not sure quite understand the question and the relationship to what we discussed at committee with respect to this. I think looking forward, once there's been a suspension at a location due to major construction, the province has indicated that this will require a new license. So, that is one of the new elements for this particular location, is it will require a new license. In addition, it'll have to meet the present licensing requirements. What I meant, what I was discussing earlier is actually what the role of the city is now legislative with respect to childcare. We are now essentially the system service manager, and we act on behalf of the Province of Ontario. Previously, we had no direct relationship with determining where services would be offered in the city. That was largely an independent decision. The province has now, as part of that legislative, extended a requirement for the city to participate and assist in reviewing licenses so that locations are not open that indirectly compete with others and inadvertently undermine one program over another. That's really now what the role of the city is with respect to childcare and planning what services are offered in which communities.
And so, what's being asked for in the motion is not something or discussions that have already been had with the province?
No. This is something in terms of a location that is available and determining how we would proceed and what we are required to do now as a province to assist in that effort in the expressed interest of the community.
My other point, and it was touched upon briefly with Counselor Eglie's comments, is in terms of narrowing this down, so I don't know if that's a friendly amendment where we work with all not-for-profits across the city as opposed to one specific one in Lower Town.
This does not... My understanding, the motion is not specific to one not-for-profit. It just indicates that there will be a not-for-profit at the end of the day.
Okay, because the way it's worded now, it speaks to a specific one in Lower Town and a specific address here, so that's what I'm reading.
I think it's because this one has been shut down temporarily. They go to construction at the OCH building.
Okay, but if there are similar, are there any other ones in a similar circumstance with the not-for-profit that are going through similar things where we can add into the motion?
Well, I think maybe, Dr. Burry, I think the best advice is if there is a similar situation, the best of my knowledge, there isn't. This one has extenuating circumstance because it's an OCH building that's gone under a full reef retrofit and they had to move the daycare out. So, if you know of one in your ward that's under those circumstances, then we'd be pleased to deal with it through the same process.
Okay, thank you.
That's fair. Okay. Okay, so on the motions presented by Counselor Flurry, seconded by Counselor Deans, carried. On the main motion as amended, carried. Thank you. Motion to adopt reports, motion important adoption of reports. Counselor Brockington, seconded by Counselor Leeper.
Thank you, Your Worship, that the Ottawa Board of Health reports seven and seven A in camera, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee report thirteen... Oh, excuse me, fifteen, Community and Protective Services Committee report thirteen, Environment Committee report eight, and Planning Committee report twenty-four be received and adopted as amended.
Carried, adopted. Motions of which notice have been previously given, motion dont avait été donné entièrement, Counselor Leeper, seconded by Counselor Eglie, and I believe this is a minor change from the original notice of motion. Counselor Leeper?
It is. Thank you, Chair, Mr. Mayor. This is a motion to allow the Heart Institute to close a couple of the roads around the civic hospital area in order to host its, what is looking to become a very big birthday party on the occasion of its 40th anniversary, whereas the Ottawa Heart Institute is to hold a 40th anniversary celebration breakfast, and whereas Ruskin Street from McFarlane, entrance to the hospital parking lot tomorrow's roundabout, is required to be closed, and whereas the closure of Ruskin Street, Hutchison Avenue, and McFarlane Avenue from Kennelworth to Ruskin Street as outlined, is required to accommodate the event and tent setup commencing from 7:30 p.m. Tuesday, May 10, 2016, and whereas the celebration breakfast will occur on the morning of Wednesday, May 11, 2016, and that the tent setup and teardown both require three hours, and whereas traffic is to be rerouted to the north of Reed Avenue at the roundabout, west on Kennelworth Avenue to south on McFarlane Avenue, and east on Ruskin Street to access the hospital parking lot, which is expected to incur a medium amount of impact, and whereas the City of Ottawa Special Events on City Roads 2001 to 60 bylaw prohibits road closures before 6:00 p.m. Monday to Friday, whereas parking spaces will be restricted in the amount of 52 spaces with 180 vehicle transactions impacted, and whereas the Ruskin Street closure will end and reopen at 1:30 p.m. Wednesday, May 11, 2016. Therefore, be it resolved that in order to allow for the issuance of the required permits, Council approved the closure of Ruskin Street, Hutchison Avenue, and McFarlane from Kennelworth Street to Ruskin Street from 7:30 p.m. Tuesday, May 10, 2016, to 1:30 p.m. Wednesday, May 11, 2016, providing it meets all the terms and conditions contained within the issued permit. For the past couple of weeks, Mr. Mayor, I've been working with the Heart Institute, with the local residents, and with staff to ensure that the impact is minimal. Patient appointments are being shuffled to minimize the amount of parking they need. Thank you.
Great, thank you. On the motion, carried. Motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure, motion exigeant la suspension des règles de procédure. First one is by Counselor Deans, seconded by Counselor Flurry, with respect to an application for the Cultural Spaces Programme on suspension of the rules. Carried. Counselor Deans?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just introduce the motion first. Whereas in 2012, City Council approved the Renewed Action Plan for Arts Heritage and Culture, including the capital priority to expand and redevelop Arts Court and the Ottawa Art Gallery, and whereas on November 13, 2013, City Council approved the Ottawa Art Gallery Expansion and Arts Court Redevelopment Project Funding Framework and Procurement Process, and whereas the Canada Cultural Spaces Programme announced additional funding of $168 million for eligible projects in the federal budget in March 2016, and whereas the City of Ottawa would greatly benefit from a federal contribution to the Ottawa Art Gallery Expansion and Arts Court Redevelopment Project, and whereas the Canada Cultural Spaces Programme will not fund expenses incurred prior to written funding confirmation, and the Ottawa Art Gallery Expansion and Arts Court Redevelopment Project has progressed to the design development and construction phase, and whereas an expedited application will enable more eligible expenses to be considered for funding, and whereas a council resolution approving such a request for funding as well as identification of the authorized signing authority for the application is required by the Canada Cultural Spaces Programme. Therefore, be it resolved that City Council approve an application by the City of Ottawa for $6 million Canada Cultural Spaces Programme contribution to the Ottawa Art Gallery Expansion and Arts Court Redevelopment Project, and be it further resolved that the city manager be delegated the signing authority for this application to the Canada Cultural Spaces Programme. And, Mr. Mayor, if I could just say a few words on this. We all know that Arts Court is an exciting project for our city. When completed, it will be a cornerstone of Ottawa's arts and cultural scene. It's also an important sesquicentennial legacy project, and I think it's fair to say that we were disappointed in the extreme when the former federal government decided against contributing to this project. In March, the new federal government announced that the Canada Cultural Spaces Programme would receive an additional $168 million for eligible cultural projects. The Cultural Spaces Programme funds the construction, renovation, and repair of cultural facilities intended for professional arts and heritage activities. The Ottawa Art Gallery Expansion and Arts Court renovation is the city's top capital cultural initiative under the Renewed Action Plan for Arts and Heritage, and this project is in perfect alignment with the objectives of the Cultural Spaces Programme. Work has already begun on the project, and in order to optimize the eligibility of expenses under the programme, staff are recommending that we apply by early May. We have calculated the $6 million by going back to the $34.8 million we need to do all the work and deducting the provincial contribution of $6.7 million, the city contribution of $17.6 million, and the fundraising corporate contributions of $4.5 million. That gets us to the $6 million number. In preliminary discussions with Cultural Spaces, we have identified that this is reasonable and close to the contribution amount that they were considering just a few years ago. So, Mr. Mayor, I've dubbed this the squeaky wheel motion. If at first you don't succeed, try, try again. So, I just ask you to support this so we can try and get that $6 million. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Kakish?
I just had a quick question to staff, because I was under the impression that the dollars have already been allocated to this process, and Counselor Deans, I think, touched on that a bit, but can we clarify why there's a shortfall of $6 million, or if there is a shortfall of $6 million when this has already been set aside for this project?
Mr. Mayor, this budget was revised after the decision from the federal government. Applying for this federal funding will allow us to go back, and as Counselor Deans mentioned, there is an exemplar designed for this building, which we have been working with, but we've been value engineering out of it many of the features that were originally foreseen when the $9 million was a possibility. What this funding will allow us to do now is to go back and add some of the important elements. Most importantly, the refurbishment of the two-daily old section of the building, which we could foresee was going to be a challenge to bring up to a decent standard compared to the new building. So, this funding is very much needed and will allow us some breathing room in terms of a more complete project to get this done.
Okay. And if we don't get that funding, would this also be eligible perhaps through the federal stimulus funds too in terms of the social or in terms of the infrastructure pillars that the federal government announced?
Mayor, without having seen the specifics of what eligibility might apply, this is the type of project that, of course, because it is capital construction, we would seriously consider applying for it under any programme that we might be eligible. The benefit of this one is that it is limited to cultural facilities, and is, again, as Counselor Deans mentioned, it really is the type of programme that this project is really designed for.
Okay, so the $6 million is really to have some nice to haves as opposed to the basic stuff. If we don't get that $6 million, it's not the end of the world for us.
The elements of the project that this $6 million could help with are very important to the project. We are, through value engineering process of coming in within budget, having to look at some serious reductions in the project in terms of the scope, the materials that we use, those kinds of things. So, I would characterize it more as being able to deliver something closer to the original vision that Council had been presented, and being able to have two buildings, a new building and then an older building with refurbishments that are totally compatible, accessible, and working well together.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. So, on the motion, carried. The next motion requiring suspension of the rules moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Deans, with respect to taxi fee. On suspension, carried. This is as a result of an administrative error with respect to the fees charged to taxi drivers. It was, the old fee was, as you may recall, was $50. The budget put that fee up to $55, and the notices were sent out for $50. So, I think in fairness, because it was an error on the part of the city, in consultation with Counselor Deans, the fair thing to do is to keep the figure at $50. It would be a cost to the city budget of $20,000 that can be absorbed, and I'm hoping that members of council will support this as a goodwill gesture towards our taxi drivers. So, thank you, Counselor Deans. Counselor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I strongly support your motion that you and Counselor Deans has put on the floor. I just wanted to ask a question related to this. There were a number of other increases in the 2016 budget that spanned other departments. I just want to ensure that those have been adhered to as well, and there are not any other administrative errors that may catch us by surprise. Can I get a comment from the city manager, acting city manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of any other issues that might catch council by surprise.
So, how did this one happen?
We'll ask Mr. Demonte, and I think, Mr. Acting City Manager, we should, through the Treasurer, do a thorough review of all the fee increases that were approved to make sure they're actually being acted upon. Mr. Demonte?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, quite simply, staff, as we were focused on the taxi review, automatically put what they normally do every year, and it was very much an administrative error, and the notices went out at $50 instead of $55.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for asking for that review. I think that's very important. I do support the motion. I just think the timing of this $5 increase was very poor timing after a very contentious last 18 months, and I think the right thing to do is to proceed and approve this motion. Thank you.
Great. On the motion, carried, adopted. Are there any other motions requiring suspension of the rules? Notice the motion for consideration of subsequent meaning, avis de motion pour examiner réunion subsistant, Counselor Elshan Tiri, seconded by Counselor Tierney, please.
In fact, I read it, Mr. Mayor. The motion moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Tierney, where the requirement set by the Ontario Highway Traffic Act and the Ontario Traffic Manual to use police officers to direct traffic on closed highways impose direct and indirect costs on the taxpayer in light of the significant amounts of road and associated constructions undertaken by on behalf of the municipality, and where the requirement is often met through the use of paid duty assignment undertaken by off-duty police officers in addition to their existing shifts, and whereas such a work would likely be undertaken by properly trained and authorized persons who are not also police officers, including municipal bylaw enforcement officers, peace officers, or special constable at the significant reduced cost provided that necessary legislative and other changes were made by the provincial government. Therefore, be it resolved that Ottawa City Council petition the province of Ontario to amend the necessary portion of the Highway Traffic Act to permit properly trained and authorized persons other than police officers to direct traffic and close highways. Here, further resolved that Ottawa City Council request the province of Ontario to amend Ontario Traffic Manual Book Seven temporary conditions so as to remove the requirement that paid-duty police officers be used to control traffic within 30 meters of intersection with active signals. Mr. Mayor, this has been a similar motion been moved around major city in Ontario because the province are now opening the Police Service Act and trying to amend the Highway Traffic Act, but I think it's a good opportunity. Yesterday, I got a call from one of our colleague on AMO asking us if we can also copy them on this motion when the city petitioned the province, because AMO is interested in this one as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, is that a notice or motion?
Yeah, notice or motion.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll deal with this at our next meeting, and also make sure I'm meeting with Minister Nakvi today, so I'll give him a copy of it as well. Are there any other notices or motion? No. Motion to introduce bylaws, motion important presentation des règlements, Counselor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, that the bylaws listed on the agenda under motions to introduce bylaws, three readings, be read and passed.
Adopted, carried. Confirmation bylaw, Counselors Brockington and Leeper.
Thank you, that the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of the 27th of April, 2016.
On the motion, carried. Colleagues, National Day of Morning is taking place on Thursday, April 28, and tomorrow, from sunrise to sunset, the flags at all City of Ottawa sites will be lowered to half-mast in order to commemorate the National Day of Morning for persons killed or injured in the workplace. Please take a moment to remember those who have lost their lives due to work-related causes as we continue to work together to prevent workplace death, illnesses, and injuries. The City of Ottawa is committed to providing employees with a physically and psychologically safe and healthy workplace through the city's health and safety policies and procedures and the efforts of the many workplace safety, health, and wellness committees. We strive to provide a secure work environment. Thank you for protecting the health, safety, and wellness of yourself and others at work. On Sunday, May 1, join me in kicking off North American Occupational Safety and Health Week in Ottawa at the annual Steps for Life 5K Walk at City Hall. The event is a fundraiser in support of Threads of Life, an organization that helps more than 2,000 Canadian families who have suffered from a workplace fatality, traumatic life-altering injury, or occupational disease. More information is available on the city's website, and I believe Counselor Taylor is representing me at the National Day of Morning, which takes place at Vincent Massey Park in the south end of the city. So, I encourage members, if they are able to attend, to please do so tomorrow at Vincent Massey Park, and we have authorized members of health and safety committees to have that extra time to travel to Vincent Massey Park to participate in that very solemn ceremony that I've had the honor of participating in for the last several years, but regrettably will not be able to attend tomorrow as a result of my first NCC board meeting. Madam Deputy Clerk, are there any written inquiries? Adjournment, Counselor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, that the proceedings of the City Council meeting of the 27th of April, 2016, be adjourned.
Carried, carried. Merci. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.